Some of the people hang out and chat. We have people down in senior, retired people.
Except I'm hungry.
Just hard.
Hard on the children.
Everybody got ready?
Yes.
Yep. Well, this is nice. It's nice to have all of you here. Enjoyed hearing all the conversations. I'd like to welcome everybody to our January Elizabethan City Schools Board of Education meeting. Happy to have the band here. Happy to have the football team here. Happy to have, well, everybody. So glad you're here. I will tell you, we're going to do the recognitions. We're going to recognize everybody and then I will give everybody an opportunity to leave. You are welcome to stay. I'm not expecting you to. So if you'll just wait until we do all the recognitions, I'll just kind of give you guys a chance to leave if you want to. Would that be okay? All right. If you would, please rise and we're going to have the pledge of the flag and a moment of silence.
As we have our moment of silence today, I'd like to remember Ms. Bobby McLeaney. She was a sister to Ms. Armstrong, former board member. Okay, let's have our moment of silence.
Thank you.
Salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
It's time for citizens to speak in accordance with Board Policy 1.404. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, state your name and your address. Seeing no one, I am going to turn this over to Dr. Gardenhour for our recognition time.
Okay. Mr. Elliott, we'd like to give you and Mr. Lockhart the floor to recognize the successful Bessley Band.
Well, we have our students here because they're already being part of the thousand so gentlemen, you can.
Mr. Elliott, you always do this much more organized than anybody else.
That's what I'm taking.
Thank you very much. And then ladies, if you'll step up, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much and we'd like to thank the board this evening for their recognition of the band. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Gardenhour and let him explain why he's recognizing us tonight.
The band not only teaches, I think, life skills and character. They're all professional musicians in my estimation. And I feel like they have won competitions throughout the region. Obviously, they did very well when we were able to go see them at Science Hill and they took first there. And then also, we went to Nashville to watch them and they came in second at State. So we're so proud of their efforts and their accomplishments and everything about the people who they've become under the direction of Mr. Elliott and Mr. Lockhart. So we appreciate all of you. And Mr. Elliott, you could kind of expand on that a little bit if you'd like to.
Well, I would like to thank, of course, Chris Lockhart. You could be the greatest high school band director in the world, but if nobody knows how to play from the middle school, it's pretty worthless. So Mr. Lockhart does a fantastic job. And we, as the high school band collective, believe the students and I, of course, are very appreciative of him. We're also very appreciative of our band club organization because without our band club organization, as you well know, they fund 99.9% of everything that is done with the band at the middle school as well as the high school. So we're very appreciative of that and the community and, of course, the school system with their continued support. But I would like to recognize the senior class. We should have won, right?
No.
Okay. But that's what everybody always thinks, that you should have won. But I was extremely proud. Our best performance of the season was our last performance of the season. And so in our minds, regardless of whether we came in first or second, we actually did win because we met every goal that we wanted to have this year. Our goal was to be a top 10 finisher at a regional competition at Western Carolina. And we did. Our goal was to win the competition at Science Hill and we did. And our goal at State was to do the best performance that we were capable of doing. And we did feel like when we left the field that night, we had our best performance. So this is a very, very good senior class. They're very hardworking. I would like to recognize the color guard. Color guard girls, if you could raise your hands for just a second. The color guard made a decision in August that they were going to win the state championship in their category. And they believed completely and totally that they were going to. And with a very strong instructional staff and a wonderful work ethic, they were able to succeed all expectations and they were successful in their goal. I think it's often a bad thing to say, "I'm going to grow to be seven feet tall" because that's an unobtainable goal. But I think, as John Wooden says in his book, "I'm going to play like I'm seven feet tall." That's what our goal is. These students may not have been the best band in the state of Tennessee, but they worked as hard as the best band in the state of Tennessee. So I'm very, very proud of them. I'm very, very proud of their accomplishments. But most importantly, I'm very proud of the people that they've grown to be. So thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Gardenhour. Thank you, our school board, for everything. And I'm sure the seniors are very glad to have the recognition tonight.
On three. One, two, three. Do one more. One, two, three.
While they're sitting down, I'll say one final word about Mr. Elliott and Mr. Lockhart. You won't find two people who are more passionate about the music program and the band program than those two gentlemen. And they spend a lot of extra hours working with our kids and focusing on how creatively make things happen. And that takes working with parents and students. And they give a lot of extra time. We appreciate you so much. Thank you both of you. Okay, the next one will be Coach Whitten. If you'll come forward and bring your team forward.
We've got a few of our players. And coaches, you guys come on forward, please. This team had a huge accomplishment this year. We finished 10-2. We finished, our final record was number five in the state. Our seniors won 39 games in four years. We graduated 22 seniors a year ago. This year, we entered the season with 10 seniors. We lost one of our best players two weeks before the season started. And we were probably a better team because of it. It was probably the one of the most unselfish football teams we've ever had that I've been a part of, that I can remember. Just so many question marks entering the season. And we had eight weeks preparation up to our first game. And the way we played against Science Hill this year, you go into a game with a lot of things as a game plan, as you ask for our young men. And if you can get two or three of them, you've got a chance to win. But our kids, every point that we had, the effort, the passion, the enthusiasm, leading up to the season, leading up to that game was phenomenal. So we had a lot of guys that fought through some adversity, fought through some injuries. One of the most important things that I was proud of is everybody that started the season finished the season. We had some guys fight through some injuries and that's always tough. And then one of the things too as well is, you know, in a new league and playing some unfamiliar teams, you know, we not only beat those teams, but we beat those teams because we executed at an extremely high level. And, you know, even though we're supposed to win a lot of those games, the way we won them makes you extremely proud as a coach. So we've got a few coaches here. We went 7-4 in our JV program. We lost to Kingsport once, Johnson City once, and Greenville once, and Bristol once. So our young guys played a lot of good competition and we're looking forward to next year. We only lost 10 seniors. So as we always enter the season, expectations are extremely high. But our support staff, we've got a Cyclone Touchdown Club that helps our program extremely well. Coach Wilson, we're fortunate with a lot of these big guys up here. We need a lot of great equipment to keep them healthy throughout the season. And we're fortunate enough, we've got great uniforms, great cleats, great locker room. And most importantly, now we've got a great stadium to play in. So I tell you, just the Fridays were great, playing in a stadium. But Monday through Thursday has made life a lot easier, practicing, always having a great place to practice. And, you know, Coach Hocke here has done all the painting for the last nine years. And I know he's helped it, liked it with the turf and everything. So we're very appreciative. We appreciate everybody's efforts in the stadium and we're looking forward to another great season. And as we enter the 10th season, as our staff has been together, we started our offseason program a week ago. And it was probably one of the best group efforts entering the offseason in our 10 years together. So looking forward to a lot of great things. I know Valerie's, is Valerie here? Valerie's here. I want to thank Valerie. She feeds a lot of these boys at Beefo Brady's. And we're appreciative of her and everybody supports our program.
That's a big back row.
It would be appropriate right now for you to go in the Betsy routine.
Just do some cartwheels.
While they're sitting down, I'll say the coaching staff is excellent and our kids are excellent. One of the things Coach Whitten and I talked about on the phone one night at the beginning of the season was the fact that he's not only building football skills, he's building character in his program. And I think that that's something that sets us apart. And I really believe that we have been able to achieve what we're trying to do. We're not only trying to build good football players, we want to build good men and ladies. So we thank you so much. And Coach Whitten, thanks for all of your time. Staff, thank you as well.
Well, first of all, we really appreciate you guys coming out tonight. I know that there's lots of other things you could be doing. And we really appreciate it. It's nice seeing you. We're so proud of the band. We're so proud of football. We had a great time this fall cheering on all of you. So thank you very much. We're not going to be doing the last word. Okay. So that's time for, this is all we're going to do for our recognition tonight. So if you would like to leave, you may leave now. But you're welcome to stay.
What happened to the scholars?
They're not here. We're going to give them another knock. Yeah. If you're wondering, if you're following along, we're going to recognize our Nisswonger Scholars at a later date. So they had other things, other commitments. Thank you for not thinking of that word for $10. So yes, we will get to them. So time to approve the consent and regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I would like to remove item number 11, which was our board policy on social media. We didn't get to have our workshop. So we'll just take that off if you guys are okay with that. And I think maybe we just need to set a time for a workshop. There's probably two or three agendas that, excuse me, policies that we need to talk about. And especially this one is going to require, I just don't want to do that in a regular meeting. So if you guys are okay with that, I'll remove that from the agenda. Anybody have any other questions or comments about the agenda? Okay. I'm on the floor to approve the consent and regular agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. And Dr. Gardenhour?
Okay. First of all, there are a couple of things that are kind of heading down the pipeline here and wanted to make you aware of. Next month, we will be putting on possible renovation to a few TA Duggar classrooms. That's going to be up for your approval. And we're going to be working on a budget structure between now and next month. And we feel that that's something that we had a retreat earlier this week, last week, I'm sorry, to look at some possible issues there and some things we need to do to just make the stadium as it is a little bit better to house the people we need to. And tonight, we'll be discussing as well a little bit about the home grandstands and the current shape that they're in. We had looked at earlier at Chartwells, which was a food service organization. And we were looking at the possibility of outsourcing our food service to another entity. One of the ideas that we've come up with throughout the process is the fact that we would like to keep our staff onboard and then look at that down the road. But I think it would be beneficial if we could, as a board, as many as we could, to maybe take a trip and see what we're talking about. We've had another school system in Green County that went with us on the same day to look at those, look at the food service options that they had. And I think it would be good for us to at least take a trip and see what's there and see what they can offer. As far as buying power for food and some other innovative ideas, I think that we could use and bring to our school system as possibilities and at least take it down the trail to make sure that we have the best service possible for our students. And so we're going to look at scheduling a trip maybe this month. And then the goal of that is for us to put a request for proposals out to see what different food service companies would possibly be able to say.
Now, would this be going to the school system in Spartanburg?
It would be going to Spartanburg and kind of seeing what's down there. So I'll be in touch with you to talk a little bit about the possibilities and options that we have. But we feel like keeping our staff is an important part of who we are and how we want to operate. And we'll be talking more about that at a later date. Kayla Carter, our Public Relations Director, she helped and did a great job on putting together our ECS Vortex, which is our magazine that's going to be coming out. And I wanted her to come up and talk a little bit about kind of what went into getting this ready and what she's been doing.
Thank you. I was really excited to work on this project. It's a chance to really highlight all the great things that we do here, the school system, the students, the teachers, everyone, all of the projects that we're working on as well. So I guess if you want to follow along, we've kind of incorporated a letter from Dr. G. We have a few announcements in there. Wanted to make sure to include the parent portal. We were just kind of collecting informational items as we went along. So if you guys have any suggestions or anything to make this better, please don't hesitate to let me know. Did a quick Q and A with Richard Van Huss, talking about the stadium. Wanted to highlight the progress with, you know, the music room and classrooms at the high school and also include TA Duggar in that facilities improvement spread. We included the report card summary, which has a lot of great, I mean, wow, just when I was reading over that, I was so proud to be a part of this school system. I mean, that is fantastic. We utilized a page to promote the community involvement program to try and bring, you know, more people into the mix of that program. The new playground at West Side, interviewed Alania. She had a lot of great things to say. And I think that project is definitely noteworthy. Wanted to also, you know, shed some light on the No Child Left Behind Replacement Act. We did kind of a little spread about the federal and state programs. And of course, our donor recognition page, which is a great way to highlight all the people who support us. And unfortunately, this page is missing a few people, but it has been updated. So if you see someone missing there, make sure to let me know. But it has been updated. So yeah, I've had a lot of fun putting this together and working with everybody on this. So I hope we can continue to do something like this in the future.
We hope this will be the first of many. And it's just one more way we can get the word out about what good things are going on within the school system and hopefully in a high-quality way. So thank you for all your hard work.
It's really nice, I think, especially for the community and for parents to have something that you can go back to. Because we talk about stuff, you read about it in the newspaper, and then you put it aside. And this is something you can hang on to and look back over. And, you know, there's a lot of good information in there. Obviously, a lot of work went into this. Is this something that's going to come out yearly or?
We are looking at that, definitely at least yearly, like an annual report. But we, maybe we'll do it biannually. The other, the other part of it is, is we want to take this information and condense it down into a trifold document that we can put at the Chamber of Commerce. And that's another goal that we have, to try to condense this. We wanted to make sure this was in a format that you all would approve and felt comfortable with before we moved any further in the process about sending it out and doing that type of thing. So if you have any comments or questions, just please send those on to us and we'll try to take those into account.
It would be good to put it in real estate offices as well.
Sure.
When people are looking to move here.
Absolutely.
Okay. The other, before you leave this evening, just if you'll talk with me about possible dates for the city council slash school board budget workshop meeting. We're going to try to have a workshop. And the city has given us four dates that they could possibly be available. And so we want to try to make sure that meets everyone's schedule and that we're excited to have that opportunity with the city council. It's the first time that's happened in a long time. So if you'll see me before you go and we'll try to make a deck for that, we would appreciate it.
I believe next, we have Mr. Wright to come tell us what's going on at West Side. I'm about 50/50 with remembering this. So it's, you know, I'm excited for myself right there.
West Side, always call it the land flowing of milk and cookies is my name for it. And there's lots of both. But I just wanted to highlight a few things. I'd given quite a detailed report at the beginning of the year. And one of the most exciting things I've received here lately is about the writing assessment. There's over 600,000 students took the writing assessment last year in the state of Tennessee. And of that 600,000, about a little over 300 made a perfect score. So it was very few in the entire state made a perfect score on that. And we're informed that one of our students made a perfect score. So we're very excited about that. And we were going to honor her this morning, but with the two-hour delay, we're going to put it off and maybe tomorrow. And so give her some recognition. But that's a big deal. We had gotten our writing assessment scores back and I was very disappointed. I'm like, these are horrible, until I started looking and comparing them to the rest of the state. And Elizabethan City Schools did very well. And so it's just the way they had scored them. So we're doing well on that. So playground, just give you a little update on that. Our PTAC again has been applying for a 501-3C. A lot of the grants, that's what you need in order to, for the nonprofit status. And so we've not been able to apply for several of those grants. We've gotten several little ones. So right now, I would say about $14,000. PTAC set up a fund just for that. So if there's a different principal, a different PTAC president, that money will be designated for the playground. Often, one of the things I've heard for years is they say every year they're going to buy a playground equipment and then they never do, you know, because it's so expensive. So but even if they don't get the 501-3C status by the end of the year, I think they've got plans for other fundraisers and a few smaller grants and where hopefully they can get around $30,000 or $40,000 this year. Maybe they can do a portion of that this year. They don't have to do it all in one lump. But they're working very hard and hopefully we can get that. And again, it's, we hope it to be. And again, it's, we hope it to be all handicap accessible, the complete structure. West Side Technology, that's something I saw in the budget workshop. I was glad to see they're going to have a reoccurring monies for that. But it's something that I think we all need to pitch in help. And so we hope, you know, right now we have two laptop carts and one computer lab. So we basically have three classrooms that we can use for testing and then we've got four eportal carts. But we hope to maybe purchase one other cart of some type of device. We're not sure yet. I know the high schools are going to be trying the Chromebooks, so we'll let them be the guinea pigs. And if that works out, we might try to do that. But I think it's something that we need to try to put, you know, as a school without asking for extra, either through our PTAC or just trying to use some of our budgeted money every year. I think we need to try to buy those so that we can, you know, with the way testing is. So we're going to try to do that before the end of the year is one of our goals. Pros and cons of testing. This year has definitely been challenging. It's been a different year, you know, with the new standards and then new tests that we have. You know, we've, I've had a lot of parent discussions about the math. And so if you've got a child, you, I've had several come in and throw me down, work this problem for me. I've had that several times, you know. Fortunately, I've been able to work them all so far. And so, but it's, it's been challenging and, and I've shared that with the State Department. I said, you know, our, our parents are frustrated, I get frustrated, and they offer no apology because it's working. And so I think that's something we need to keep pushing out there, that it is working. The state of Tennessee fastest growing on the NAEP score, which is, you know, the National Assessment of Educational Progress. And, and I believe Tennessee's about to hit the, the top fifty percent on math. And even though we haven't grown a lot with ELA, a lot of the other states have dropped, but we've maintained. And so it is working. So I think we need to keep telling people, even though you might hear frustrated parents and what the State Department said is, this is not your parents' math. Our children are going to be smarter, they're going to be better prepared for college and career. And so that's the thing I keep preaching and, and I'm going to stick to it. So our formative assessments in, in our professional learning communities are something that we've talked a lot about this year and they really go hand in hand. And so we, starting this January, we've started, we've worked in the scheduled PLC meetings. And that'll be every Tuesday. They're going to meet from seven fifteen to, eight, or seven forty-five to eight fifteen. And our assistants and related arts teachers will cover the classes of those teachers that are meeting. That way we don't have to in, interfere. That's pretty much homeroom. So we won't interfere with any instructional time. So that'll give us a half hour. And then we'll also continue to meet sometimes after school, sometimes instead of a faculty meeting, we'll take those opportunities. So, and those are very useful. And so, and, and again, we take that assessments and decide what we're going to do with it, you know. And the teachers each week do an analysis, so. And the rest of the story, there's a lot left in this year. And I just put a few, a lot of the dates I don't have. But it, it, the picture in this, the last page of my little handout that I gave you is of our morning mile. That's what been one of the big success stories of this year since I talked to you last. That's been a wonderful thing where our students, as long as it's warm out, if it's over thirty degrees, we let them walk in the morning and we're trying to, again, it goes along with the whole playground, Fit for Life. And so that's what our count at the bank with, with the money for the playground is called Fit for Life. And so we want these kids to not only have strong brains, but strong bodies. And so, but you can just see some of the activities that we, big activities that we have left along with lots of instruction and lots of testing. Thank you for all you do.
One thing I'll say about the morning mile is that it's one of those things that children talk about. And they also talk about having access to you during that time. Because you walk too, and I think that that's, that's very important, so.
No, no, our, our counselor, Ms. Pitts, has started walking with us because she said, this gives me a wonderful opportunity to just walk and talk with children, so.
That's cool. All right, let's move to the regular agenda. Thank you, Mr. Wright. First item is to approve the waiving of the thirty day resignation notice requirement per Board Policy 5.204 and TCA forty-nine dash five dash five oh eight for the following individual and graves. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, you have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments on this? All right, item on the floor is to approve the waiving of thirty day resignation notice requirement per Board Policy 5.204, TCA forty-nine five five oh eight for the following individual and graves. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to approve the Elizabethan City Schools twenty sixteen, I'm guessing twenty seventeen calendar. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Van Huss, I, you know, he, he can come forward. It's, they worked really hard. We had a committee of teachers that worked on this and worked together on it and came up with what they wanted in the end.
Yes, and, and what you see before you is, is what, is a compilation of the things that the teachers and the committee met and agreed to. The biggest change this year is probably the fact that we don't have a full week scheduled for a fall break. And the reason for that is there's, there's this mindset in teachers about starting school August the first. So we were able to push that till Wednesday, August the third. But because of that and the testing window that we have for the high school, for students that are taking, and of course, courses that they need to take exams in the fall, right before Christmas, in order to get enough instructional days in, as you noticed, we've basically moved almost everything out of the first semester with the exception of one professional development day and that's on the national election day in November. So that's the biggest change there. I will tell you that there's a typo on my part. We will not send progress reports home on Good Friday. So we'll, we'll modify that, so. The only other thing that may change in April, the ACT test date, the state sets that date. So, once they set that date, we feel like it's going to stay on, on April the twenty-fifth. However, if it moves, we will move that date wherever that falls, so.
I mean, choice doesn't matter, do you?
Not really. Any, any questions on the calendar?
And again, the idea is that we have equal number of days, of instructional days in the fall and the spring.
That's correct. And that, and this one, you notice down there, there's, there are eighty-five instructional days first semester and eighty-eight in the second semester.
No build-in snow days.
Well, we, we do have the, of course, we go an extra thirty minutes to accrue thirteen snow days and we turn around and make six, seven of those for the professional development days you see here. So we technically have six banked snow days without having to do anything to the calendar. Thank you.
Well, please thank the teachers who served on this committee. I cannot imagine a committee that's probably tougher to serve. Anybody have any questions or comments? All right, item on the floor, approve the Elizabethan City Schools twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will, we're skipping eleven. Next item is discussion of TA Duggar Junior High Home Grandstands. And so this is a discussion, so we're going to discuss.
We took a field trip over to the Brown Childers last week, last Friday, and just looked at the condition, general condition of the home grandstands. And there's definite, definitely aging that has occurred there over the years that it's been, which is why we ended up building a, a new stadium. But we're in a situation now where we need to make some decisions about the safety of that structure and whether we want to have it occupied by people, generally in just the seating of the home side, the home grandstands.
Well, obviously it's, you know, we were there and it's, there's places that are crumbling. You can see the, is it called rebar? Is that what that stuff is called? I was able to put my hand in, as far as I was willing to put it into a hole, go back pretty deep. So there's a lot of, I mean, there's, on the grandstands, it's, it's tough.
I'm, I'm really concerned, should we even fence that off or somehow close that area off? I'm concerned somebody at dusk would go up through those steps and a leg, a foot would go through there.
You have a lot of people who run the bleachers.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm thinking.
And, yeah, if you're not, if, if you're not aware of.
I was shocked at how bad it was.
You know, Dr. G's telling me where this hole is and I'm looking at the bleachers and it's on the steps.
On the steps.
And, yeah, I mean, you, and it's up pretty high. It would be a, a big accident, so.
I don't know what kind of fence you could put up, though. If they want to do it, they're going to do it. Especially when there's nobody around. I mean, didn't you say that there were, there were groups of people who were doing it?
No, you just see people. I mean, you just see people there sometime. I'm one of them. I've been over there and you'll walk the track and.
Because I thought if it was groups, you know, maybe there could be some kind of waiver they could have to sign.
I was just thinking, closing off each end of the bleachers, just on the right end and the left end.
Put a sign that says, do not enter. At least you've done some due diligence to keep people from.
That's my concern.
From getting there, keep out, you know, safety area. Even, even a construction, you could even put a.
Even tape across.
Construction tape and a sign that says, you know, I guess my thought in regards to this is that the more necessary issue is we need to sit down and start talking about the classrooms. And it's part and parcel to taking these down. It's, you know, we've had our five-year plan or what have you that's future plans. And the stadiums, you're only as good as yes, as the thing you last did. And we did the stadium, that's yesterday. It's time to look to tomorrow. And tomorrow is, you know, TA Duggar needs attention. We need classrooms and we need to start thinking how we're going to fund that and what we're going to do with them.
That, we're hoping that that will be part of the discussion that we're able to have with the City Council at our, our joint meeting. That'll be one of the, one of the things we discuss.
Well, when we were there, we talked about classrooms. You took us through and showed us where some of the things would be.
Yeah, and we're, we'll discuss that as a possible need, you know, space-wise. We're going to have to, you know, we're looking at what's coming up from the elementary schools and we've done a great job at trying to, at TA Duggar. You know, it comes to the, the place where we have a little bit of a bottleneck there. And we want to make sure that enrollment enhancement means dollars for Elizabethan City Schools. And so we're going to have to look at some creative ways and maybe look next month at a, a creative way that we can add a couple more classrooms for a very minimal cost and maybe reorganize what we're doing to fit that. So it's time there for us to make the adjustments. I think Mr. Little and I had a conversation about the possibilities of making sure that we have room. You know, that we have opportunities. And so we've been in deliberations and discussions about what we can do to try to make that happen. And I think that we have a, a pretty solid plan, but we'll, we'll come to light next month.
So if, from our discussion, we kind of are all generally in agreement that we need to put some sort of a, a barrier of, and some sort of signage that says this is not safe and.
One thing, I, and two, I think that the perception of that facility is a lot different. Very different than the reality, because you see it from a distance and you think, gosh, this looks great.
Yep.
Till you actually see what we saw on Friday and it's, it's actually shocking at how, what poor shape it's in.
And it's been, I mean, it's been patched and painted. I'm pretty sure the paint's holding it together.
The paint looks great.
Looks great, it's about that thick.
That's right, that's right.
Well, if, if the board feels good about that, then what I'll do is we'll get our maintenance staff and we'll figure out a workable solution to at least shut down the grandstand portion. We still want to utilize the press box and we can access that through the stairs on the back to get up there because we'll still need to use that. But we'll, that'll be our workable plan for the near future until we look at our next plan of what we're going to do at TA Duggar, which is part of that project. We'll be removing that grandstand to make room for new classrooms that we have coming.
You're not talking about blocking off the away bleachers, because they were in good shape.
Just the grandstands, home grandstands.
Just the grandstand. What, the away bleachers will become the new home, home side. We'll move the concession stand over to that side as well. And our boys' dressing room eventually will be moved over to that side as well, so.
Which was in really good shape.
It is in great shape and they're, well.
That's been the home side before, so just kind of back and forth, back and forth.
Going back in history, back in time.
I remember that, I was a wee little girl. All right, next item is discuss our mission statement. Last month we looked at vision and Susan had a really good suggestion for that one. We'll discuss the mission statement. I think if we do a workshop, we probably ought to really just decide to kind of nail these down and then make them a part of, of our, who we are. But, so the, I, just to discuss the mission statement, our current mission statement is, our mission is to provide all students equal and appropriate educational opportunities so they will be productive citizens, good decision-makers, and be prepared to attain their goals in life.
I just had some wordage thoughts.
Okay.
Instead of so they in order to be, and instead of good decision, informed decision. Just wordsmith, it doesn't matter really, but.
Now say that again.
Okay, first, our mission is to provide all students equal and appropriate educational opportunities in order to be productive citizens and then informed decision-makers.
Anybody else have any more thoughts on that? Probably the next little bit, we'll bring both of these back and vote if we want to. I'm changing the vision, just implementing those changes in the vision and mission statements. Anybody else have any other questions or, or any other comments on that?
So we're not voting on this, we're just?
No, we're just discussing.
Okay.
Yep. Well, Tyler, thanks for wordsmithing that. Appreciate that. All right, if you're going over to Agenda Changes, it's an additional sheet of paper Ms. Perkins provided for us. We've got two or three other little, about four other things we want to discuss. We've already discussed number fourteen. Okay, so let's go on to number fifteen, which, a couple of, we've got about three resolutions that we want to talk about. The first one is discussion of resolution by the Elizabethan Board of Education in support of voluntary quality pre-kindergarten to urge members of the Tennessee Communities and members of the Tennessee General Assembly to understand the benefits and help ensure that existing and additional state revenue be allocated to provide quality early childhood education for four-year-old children of poverty in Tennessee.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
To approve.
I think if we all wanted to do this, I think we have a resolution we'll sign.
Yes, I think, there's clear evidence. And in fact, there's clear evidence that it's not early enough. And, you know, people who report to the state that these early learning programs are not making a difference are not taking into account the fact that these students that they're looking at are ones that were behind and they're caught up. So they're saying because they're caught up that they're not effective and this is the argument against them.
Which is a ridiculous argument.
It's a ridiculous argument because the fact is they succeeded in their goal because they have caught up. That's the goal. And they were behind. Had they waited to intervene, they would be further behind. What if we had voluntary where everybody can, could participate? You would be even further ahead. And I think that the data shows in the first two years of life, the plasticity of the neural tissue and the brain development is higher there than anywhere. So, you know, the earlier we can get in touch with these students that are going to be future Elizabethan City Schools students, the better our metrics will be on our report card that already look great. But would look even better if we could start in the homes. And, and with teachers always tell me this, it's the home environment that matters, which is why we need to have as many things that we can support to that end in our communities to keep the families strong. And to, and that may be a park or a stadium or, you know, fixing the band where people can participate. But to have, you know, engaged parents and children together, but it needs to start at age zero, at the, at birth. And that's the, the obstetrician talking to me, but I'm just telling you, there's clear data on it, so.
Your reasoning was what Mr. Plus said last, last. this, is basing his reasoning on one study, one Vanderbilt study. So, we got to kind of get him to start looking at the big picture and not just one study. And when I asked to cu, talk about these, I made some copies of what Washington County did, and I noticed that the administration did some as well, which I really appreciate. But this is, Washington County kind of started this whole thing. And now there are quite a few other counties that are doing this. And if you saw in the paper, um, the education committees are meeting right now, last week, this week, and next week. So, this is a really timely thing for us to do, to, um, let them know that these are the kinds of things that local boards want. You know, we're getting more local control back from No Child Left Behind. So, I, I think this is a perfect time to do this.
One of the smartest things that we can ever do as a board, when these things, you know, sometimes you're wondering, do they make a difference? They make a huge difference. Our signatures on things make a big difference. Also, call your representatives, our representatives. Um, Ben Torres called me last week just to, you know, see if there was anything that we had questions about, uh, as they're going to the Hill, as they're in these discussions. Um, but periodically, he will call, or before him, it was, uh, Lee Harrell, and they will call and ask us to call our representatives if there's something coming up. And, uh, we did this last fall, I believe, and, um, Senator Crowe was the only person who voted against it, because it, from our, from the efforts of everybody calling him and asking him. And so they appreciated what we did. But I agree, we've got to let them know that, you know, this is working and this is money well spent. So, we will just have this out. Don't leave until you sign it, so.
So, do we need a motion to, to, that we're going to do this, to, to sign the resolution, or how do we need to act?
We, absolutely. We can do that. So, we have a motion to sign this resolution of support of the voluntary quality pre-kindergarten.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. We've had any more discussion on it? Uh, so the item on the floor is discussion as the, uh, we are going to be signing our support of this, um, uh, quality pre-kindergarten. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. The next one is discussion of resolution by the Elizabethan Board of Education opposing the use of TN Ready Data for Teacher Evaluations for the school year, uh, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen.
So moved.
Without any discussion, you're ready to go, huh?
I am. It's not ready. TN Ready is not ready.
It is not ready.
Well, again, if you look at, um, what Washington County did, their, their rationale is that there's, um, too many unknowns, that the ten, TN Ready tests probably are not aligned yet with the standards, and there's a lot of technology gaps. So, they're asking for a one-year waiver for this thirty-five percent of a teacher's evaluation, um, because there's just, you know, the, the kids and the teachers are the ones that are going to be doing this. And if they're not ready, then I don't, I don't think they should be tied to this thirty-five percent of their evaluation this year.
Has it not been removed to a ten percent?
It has been reduced to a ten percent. Um, so they, they have moved in that direction.
In that direction.
What I will say is that there is a great fear on behalf of every school system, uh, at this point, that we still, we had a day in the fall that was called the Break Mist Day, and Miss is the, the platform that they're using, and we broke mist. Now, we are now, probably, two weeks ago, we had another, uh, we looked at another, uh, opportunity. Uh, they, we still have a lot of issues. Uh, so the commissioner has been sending updated emails. Now, keep in mind, they've tried to put a lot of students on all at the same time. We don't think that, because the testing window is so wide, that there won't be as much of a load on the system. So, it may very well be fine. But there is still a lot of fear that, you know, they're, they're getting into, what I always say is that they kind of get into that, you know, the chicken and the egg business, which came first, and who, whose fault is it, uh, when they're talking about these, these issues. And when I see that, I get a little nervous, uh, to be honest. So, I, I think this is a good resolution, um, opposing the use of data for teacher evaluations. I think that there are a lot of people in the state right now that would say that there's a, a large focus on tying test scores to teacher evaluations, and that's pretty damaging. And I think that there are a lot of people, especially, the, the most respected educational researcher in the country, Linda Darling Hammond, she's the most prolific researcher and the most well-respected. She sits on every presidential cabinet, and, uh, her comment in her blog last week is, what have we done? And, uh, her whole article was on how tying teacher evaluation to test scores was just too far of a jump, because teachers are being asked to be responsible for, uh, situations that just, just are almost impossible to meet. And so, uh, I just think that we've, we've talked about, and I've written about, the pendulum is swinging backwards in, into a new direction. We're not sure what it's going to be at this point, where it's going to go. But I think that there is, will be some relief in the coming months and the next year with the new reauthorization happening and how, how, uh, states are responding to the new federal guidelines. And I think that you're going to see some relief. So, um, this is kind of giving us a one-year reprieve, even though it's down to ten percent, which I think is a step in the right direction. It would just totally remove that for one year. Ten percent's too much, because it's an unknown and unproven and untested method. I would be better in favor if the state would say, we're going to penalize a system. The, what they're wanting to do is hold you accountable for outcomes, right? And so, they're saying, well, we're going to force the scores to come up, but that's not going to work unless they can get into their homes. These teachers can't be independently responsible for that. We're going to lose good teachers to, to better zip codes. And, and I'd say that with great respect for this community, but there are better demographics in other cities, and you, all you're going to do is shift teachers to places where they can perform under this guideline. And this city needs good teachers, the best teachers, because of those demographics. They've need the best ones here, not in a city where there's wealthier people and, and homes that they're more involved and have more opportunity and more tax base to support more programs and more, you know, teacher-student ratios. All this does is move even ten percent, the accountability to an individual, and make them live and teach out of fear, when this needs to be, it's, it's one thing if you hold my system accountable, it's another thing if you hold my individuals accountable. The system itself, though, it would be unfair to penalize a system, I think, as well. But that would be more acceptable to me, for them to come to my system and say, we don't care how you do it, but you're going to perform, or we're going to reduce your funding. Would make more sense to me than what they're doing with Tennessee Ready, making it part of a teacher evaluation and their pay. So, we have to stand up for them and make sure, because we're going to lose our best teachers. And if we don't, if we don't take a stand, the teachers are going to see that as, as an opportunity to find a place where they're going to be safe, because this is their livelihood. It's their profession, you know.
Well, I believe Dr. May has already made the motion that we sign the resolution. Can I have a second?
Second.
I was going to say, I didn't think we had a second.
Second, third. I like this. All right. Well, uh, item on the floor is that we will, uh, uh, sign, uh, in opposition of the use of TN data, uh, TN Ready Data for Teacher Evaluations for School Year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. All those in favor, enthusiastically vote.
Aye.
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the last item for, uh, discussion is discussion of resolution by the Elizabethan Board of Education to urge legislators to vote no on school voucher legislation. And this is one that I believe came from Mr. Torres.
You just put these on here to raise my blood pressure, didn't you?
Well, that,
All these last three just make me, yeah. Obviously, if you're for public education, uh, vouchers are a real issue. And it started that the voucher legis, legislation just was going to serve the bottom five percent of school systems, uh, or the school systems, students in school systems. And, uh, it's morphed, but I think that what they're trying to do is, you know, the voucher bill has gained a lot of, uh, steam in the last two legislative sessions, and they want to make sure that we're, we're on board with, uh, making sure we're behind public education.
When the whole thing started, I remember being at, uh, school board, um, conferences, and they just said they'll find loopholes. And, uh, once this gets some steam, then it's going to grow and it's going to become not what it was intended to. Any question? Are you comments on this before we, is there something you guys want to do about this? Do we want to make a motion to sign?
We want to make a motion to sign this resolution from TSBA.
All right. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any more comments? Item on the floor is that we will sign the resolution, uh, to urge legislators to vote no on school voucher. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. These are all up here for us to sign. Um, yes, Dr. G. Something?
Just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Alexander.
Oh, yeah.
And on behalf of the city council of Elizabethan, they, uh, had a little proclamation that they gave for school board appreciation and how, how much you mean to our community. So, if you just want to view that before you leave tonight, I thought was very nice. And he gave it to Ms. Brewer when we were at city council meeting.
Yeah, show your friends and family that the week of January twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth is school board appreciation week. Make sure they appreciate you. I told them at work they could care less, but I told them they'd appreciate me. Um, also, if you will have noticed, uh, we've been invited that week to go to the schools and eat lunch. They'd like to, to have us there. So, go have a, I think lunch is on the school system, so go crazy, uh, on that. That was a really nice thing. We got queer-ized several good times, so that was very nice. Um, again, we need to, uh, determine before you leave the date that we want to meet with city council. Um, I would like for us to, probably the safest thing for us to do is sometime in February, have a workshop to talk about some policies. We had two or three that probably require us to just get away and, or, you know, not in a, a regular school board setting, but to just kind of discuss them. One of them was the social media, and there's probably two or three others. If there's one you would like us to look at, let me know, but I would like to do that. And then, um, maybe in March or April, we can look at talking with Mr. Bennett. He should be healed up by then about, uh, doing our retreat. Anything else for anybody?
Are all three petitions?
They're all right here. Yeah.
Okay.
Places for our names. And, uh, uh, Dr. May, we'll be sending your father good thoughts. Please tell him we hope he's doing well.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Tuesday, February sixteenth, six-thirty. We will, it will be preceded by our second budget workshop at five-thirty. So, five-thirty for the budget workshop, six-thirty for the regular meeting. And may I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. You adjourn.
Okay.